Good evening, everyone. Today is September 7th, 2021. It is about 7:01 PM. Troy City Council meeting tonight. I am Bob Phillips, filling in as the President Pro Tem for President Bill Lutz, who is absent this evening. Tonight, we are going to start the meeting with our invocation by Councilman Todd Seaver, and then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Would all join me, please?
We are rise. Lord, your holy word states that there is no greater love than this, to lay down your life for a friend. Let us take a moment to pause and recognize the thirteen brave American soldiers who passed in Afghanistan. We wish to honor their sacrifice, their family's sacrifice, and to say thank you. Lord, as we reflect on the ultimate sacrifice these soldiers endured, let us remember the freedoms they were protecting. As we approach the twentieth anniversary of 9/11, let's never forget the sacrifices that were made on that day. Lord, as we think of the tragedy of that event, let us recall our response and feelings at the time. When we were unified as Americans, not divided by gender, race, or who we loved, not red or blue, rich or poor, but collectively joined in spirit as one, guided by your Holy Spirit. As we move forward, may our thoughts and deeds be respectful towards one another. May our minds discern the path you wish us to follow. Lord, may your arms embrace those that need comfort. May your eyes keep vigilant watch over our police fire and those that serve this city. And may your heart bestow blessings upon all members of our community. We say all this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. I would remind everybody in the audience to please silence your cell phones if you haven't done that already, just as a courtesy to everyone. And council folks, tonight, when you make motions, seconds and that sort of thing, please speak up. My hearing is not best, and even with these hearing aids, it's sometimes kind of busy. So if you'd do me that favor, I'd appreciate it. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Present.
Mr. Witten?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, ma'am. Tonight, we do have a public hearing on Ordinance 48, 2021. This is a rezone of parcels at 1400 Wayne Street, 920 Summit Avenue, Crescent Rear from RF7 Multiple Family Rental District to OR1 Office Residential District. And I do declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and please make your comments. Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing. And Mrs. Knight, would you please read a summary of the minutes, please?
Minutes of Council, August 16, 2021. Committee reports, Buildings and Utilities Committee recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing an amendment to the professional agreement with Hazen and Sawyer related to the wastewater treatment plant expansion. Community and Economic Development Committee recommended legislation be prepared, accepting final class, Section 2 Reserve at Washington Subdivision. Finance Committee recommended that the city proceed with the purchase of two new Packer trucks. Streets and Sidewalks Committee recommended that legislation be prepared, authorizing bidding for the King's Chapel West Main Street traffic signal. Also, Committee recommended professional services agreement with LJB Incorporated regarding South Stanfield Road reconstruction. There were two reports of the Committee of the whole. One was that legislation be prepared to authorize the removal of the Troy Low Dam and execute any related agreements. Committee also recommended a number of purchases related to the American Rescue Plan Act. Resolution Number R31, 2021, bid for a shed structure at Mima Shores, first reading and adopted. Resolution R32, 2021, contract for the West Main Street King's Chapel Drive traffic signal, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R33, 2021, agreement with LJB Incorporated regarding South Stanfield Road reconstruction project, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R34, 2021, professional services agreement, Hazen and Sawyer wastewater treatment plant, first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R35, 2021, removal of Low Dam, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O46, 2021, reserve at Washington, Section 2, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O47, 2021, amending salary ordinance, first reading and adopted. Ordinance Number O48, 2021, the rezoning was given, first reading, following various comments, council adjourned at 8:16.
Counsel? Counsel, what is your pleasure with the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Rozell and a second from Mr. Schilling to approve the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, ma'am. We have several committee reports tonight, and the first committee we'll be hearing from is the Economic Development Committee, and this will be led by Mrs. Snee as Chair.
Thank you. On August 23rd, the Community and Economic Development Committee met to review guidelines associated with establishing a new residential exterior housing improvement loan program to be funded this year from $150,000 of funding from the American Rescue Plan Act. This would provide financial assistance to homeowners to improve their property and to improve the overall housing stock of the community. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to establish the guidelines for a residential exterior housing improvement loan program in accordance with the attached, and that the appropriation of the funds for the program be included in the next reappropriation ordinance. And this is respectfully submitted by Mrs. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions from council on this item? Seeing none, Mrs. Snee, you have a second item.
Yes, this committee met on August 23rd to consider the petition filed for the annexation of 12.524 acres located on Barnhart Road, known as the Blackmore Hill Annexation. And it is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to provide for the three legislative items required by state law related to the Blackmore Hill Annexation of 12.524 acres from Concord Township. To meet the timeline of the state law for an expedited annexation, the committee supports emergency legislation. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Does council have any comments or questions on this item? All right, thank you, ma'am. Next, we're moving on to the Finance Committee for some sale of surplus items, and this will be conducted by Mr. Swazer as the Chair of that committee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. On August 23rd, this committee met to review the request that some excess public property be declared surplus and offered for sale. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to declare the below-listed listing of vehicles, mower, and parking meter parts as surplus and authorize the sale of the items. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as Chair.
Thank you, sir. Are there any comments or questions from council on this item? Seeing none, we have at the end of our committee reports. Are there any citizen comments?
We have personnel.
Personnel.
Didn't scroll down far enough, sorry. I'm getting there. Well?
Need my big two-minute spiel here.
Yeah, personnel committee report, committee report by Mr. Twist, thank you.
On August 23rd, this committee met to consider abolishing the position of Assistant Development Director that then would allow the administration to reorganize the Development Department. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, amending the FLSA exempt salary ordinance to abolish the position of Assistant Development Director. So that the reorganization can proceed without delay, the committee supports legislation being presented as an emergency measure. This respectfully submitted by Todd Seaver, Jeffrey Witten, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions by council on this item? Seeing none, and I have lost my... Oh, there it is. Yes. That is all the committee reports we have. Is that correct? Correct, thank you. Any citizen comments on any of the items that had come before committee off of these reports tonight? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and take two minutes for your comments. And Mr. Kerber is our Director of Law, is our timekeeper. So any of these items, anyone like to comment or ask about? Seeing none, we'll move along to the business portion and resolutions. And Mrs. Knight, would you please read R36, 2021?
Resolution Number R36, 2021, resolution establishing municipal services for certain territory containing 12.524 acres more or less in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is known as the Blackmore Hill Annexation. This is the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rozell and a second by Mrs. Snee on the item. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Moving to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Swazer and a second by Mr. Witten to
Adopt.
Adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, would you please read Resolution R37, 2021?
Resolution Number R37, 2021, resolution establishing buffer requirements for certain territory containing 12.524 acres more or less in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the second piece of legislation required to be filed with the county regarding the Blackmore Hill Annexation, first reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rozell and a second by Mr. Twist to... On this item, Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Swazer and a second by Mr. Schilling to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips? Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, would you please read R38, 2021?
Resolution Number R38, 2021, resolution consenting to the annexation of certain territory containing 12.524 acres more or less in Concord Township to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the third piece of legislation to be enacted regarding the Blackmore Hill Annexation and filed with the county, first reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rozell and a second by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Snee and a second by Mr. Schilling to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Moving along to Resolution 39, 2021. Mrs. Knight, would you please read that?
Resolution Number R39, 2021, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to administer a residential exterior housing improvement loan program. This establishes the initial funding of $150,000 and also sets the guidelines, first reading.
Thank you. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
We have a... Mr. Schilling has provided the motion and seconded by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Seaver and a second by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving along to ordinances, Mrs. Knight, would you please read Ordinance O48, 2021?
Ordinance Number O48, 2021, an ordinance changing the zoning of parcel numbers, DO-8057010, DO-8057020, and DO-8057015 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from RF7 Multiple Family Residential District to OR1 Office Residence District. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. It was a subject of a public hearing this evening and will be a subject of a committee discussion at our next committee session.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving along to Ordinance O49, 21, 2021, and Mrs. Knight, would you please read that?
Ordinance Number O49, 2021, ordinance amending ordinance Number O52, 2018, as amended by ordinance numbers O19, 2019, O39, 2019, O10, 2020, O48, 2020, O19, 2021, and O47, 2021, fixing salaries and wages of certain employees of the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This abolishes the position of Assistant Development Director, first reading.
No, go ahead.
Was that a motion to suspend?
Yeah, I thought that, yes, I moved to suspend, and then I said you were calling on someone else.
We have a motion by Mr. Seaver and a second by Mr. Schilling to suspend our rules. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Swazer and a second by Mrs. Snee to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yep.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Moving along to Ordinance 50, 2021, and Mrs. Knight, would you please read that one?
Ordinance Number O50, 2021, ordinance declaring municipally-owned personal property as no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the sale of such excess property. This will authorize the sale of a Ford Explorer, a mower, and several mechanical and electronic parking meters and meter parks, first reading.
Thank you. Counsel, what is your pleasure on this?
Move to suspend. Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Snee and a second by Mr. Witten to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Swazer and a second by Mr. Seaver to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Moving to our last ordinance of the evening, and this is O51, 2021, and Mrs. Knight, would you please read that one?
Ordinance Number O51, 2021, ordinance amending ordinance Number O56, 2020, as amended by ordinance Number O42, 2021, appropriating funds necessary for the various departments and offices of the city of Troy, Ohio, for the year 2021. This is the reappropriation ordinance that was discussed at the prior council meeting and also included in a report for this meeting. This is the first reading.
Counsel, what is your pleasure on this item?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Swazer and the second was Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
And we have a motion by Mr. Swazer and a second by Mr. Rozell to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. That concludes the business portion of our evening. We're going to move into communication and announcements, and Madam Mayor, do you have anything for us this evening?
Just that we have a very busy weekend coming up here in the city, and that has all been posted online. There's so much, I'm not even going to try and touch on everything that's going on this weekend, but be a lot of traffic detours and parking issues. Embrace it, but get out and see the 9/11 event. It's going to be a good weekend in Troy.
Thank you, ma'am. Our Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Titterington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to expound a little bit on the 9/11 weekend, that actually starts on Thursday, Thursday afternoon. Main Street will close between Monroe and the square. There will be an escort into town from South Market around the roundabout up to Staunton Road. Travel west on Staunton, south on Adams, and then they will come in and then be escorted into Main Street, and then the barricades will go up. That is a... It's like an 85-foot-long tractor trailer. It's a mobile museum, if you will. It's approximately 1,000 square feet of museum space. Tours will be available on Friday afternoon and evening, Saturday afternoon and evening, and Sunday, just about the same afternoon, and then they will be escorted out sometime after 7:00. And the road will open sometime between Sunday night and early Monday morning. There will be a lot going on. There will be, of course, Porch Fest is on Saturday all afternoon. There will be a concert on Friday night. The Showmobile will be on Main Street. There will be a couple of rather somber events on Saturday on the square. The Fairgrounds will have events that weekend, primarily on Saturday. The Veterans Museum on South County Road 25A will also have events all weekend. We ask that if you don't need to be in the downtown area with your vehicle, that you perhaps take a detour. We will have detours marked. If you do want to visit any of those three venues, there will be directional signage off the highway, asking that you consider parking at the Fairgrounds. off the highway asking that you consider parking at the fairgrounds. I believe it's free, but we are consolidating at the fairgrounds, and there will be free shuttles that will do drop-offs and pickups downtown on Potty Plaza, as well as at the museum, the Veterans Museum, throughout the open times of those three venues. There'll be two cross-country events. There's a football game over there, too. So it is truly going to be a busy weekend. It's supposed to be a nice weekend, and hopefully it'll be a safe and somber event. That's all I have.
The museum itself will be parked on Main Street in front of the courthouse. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Our Director of Law this evening, Mr. Kerber, do you have anything for the betterment of this?
Hi, Dylan.